Gavin, you ready to go? Good morning and welcome to the Delaware County Council Meeting this October 28th, 2025. It is 9:00 AM. If you'd please join me and stand for the pledge. Mike, would you lead us, please?
I would like to lead this through the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mike. Appreciate it. Roll call, please. Mr. Bookout.
Here.
Flanagan.
Present.
Mr. Mocal.
Here.
Mr. Hughes.
Here.
Mr. Cantz.
Here.
Piper.
Here.
Mr. Whitehead.
The President.
Mr. Freeman.
Here.
Thank you. Was the agenda posted properly?
Yes.
Entertained a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Dan, second by Jessica. Roll call.
Mr. Flanagan.
Yes.
Mr. Hughes.
Yes.
Mr. Mocal.
Yep.
Mr. Bookout.
Yes.
Mr. Piper.
Yes.
Mr. Cantz.
Yes.
Mr. Whitehead.
Yes. Thank you. Moving on to approving our minutes.
One motion for all or individual?
Let's do them individually, please.
Motion to accept the September 4th special meeting.
A second.
Motion by Dan, second by Jessica. Any comments or corrections? Roll call, please.
Mr. Flanagan.
Yes.
Mr. Hughes.
Yes.
Mr. Mocal.
Yes.
Mr. Bookout.
Yes.
Mr. Piper.
Yes.
Mr. Cantz.
Yes.
Mr. Whitehead.
Yes.
I'll move to approve the September 23rd council meeting minutes.
And I'll second.
All right, I have a motion, a second. The regular council meeting minutes have some issues. I would like to table those if I could get council to support me on that.
I agree.
I'll amend my motion to table.
And I'll second that.
All right, so I have a motion and a second. A motion by Jessica, second by Dan to table. Any questions from council? Hearing done, roll call, please.
Mr. Flanagan.
Yes.
Mr. Hughes.
Yes.
Mr. Mocal.
Yes.
Mr. Bookout.
Yes.
Mr. Piper.
Yes.
Mr. Cantz.
Yes.
Mr. Whitehead.
Yes.
I'll move to approve the September 23rd, 2025 final budget hearing minutes.
Second.
Motion by Jessica, second by Dan. Any comments or corrections? Roll call, please.
Mr. Flanagan.
Yes.
Mr. Hughes.
Yes.
Mr. Mocal.
Yes.
Mr. Bookout.
Yes.
Mr. Piper.
Yes.
Mr. Cantz.
Yes.
Mr. Whitehead.
Yes. Thank you. Moving on to transfers. Whitney.
Starting in county general, we've got 125 clerk, 125, 101 deputy, deputy filing clerk, Circuit Court III, negative 1,000. 103, 101 first deputy elections, positive 1,000 for a total transfer of zero.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Dan, second by Jessica. Rick, are you here? Rick was into that one.
You know, I'm absolutely, was this online? Yeah.
Any questions for Rick?
Was this the new one?
Yeah.
Do you have any further questions besides?
What are we doing, Rick?
Well, we lost the value of 40 and yeah. So in order to get the salary paid out and everything done, I'll get transfers from another line.
Okay, thank you.
Rick, can you turn the mic on, please?
That went on now.
Thank you.
So she had comp time from the last election that actually ran past what we had in the budget for the end of the year. So I just moved from another line to get it paid out. I'll leave that line empty for the rest of the year, but I am, of course, going to fill it immediately once, once the money's right.
Further questions from council? Hearing done, roll call, please.
Mr. Flanagan.
Yes.
Hughes.
Yes.
Mr. Piper.
Yes.
Mr. Mocal.
Yes.
Mr. Bookout.
Yes.
Mr. Cantz.
Yes.
Mr. Whitehead.
Yes. Thank you. Moving on, Whitney.
155 EMS, 135 stipends, negative 1,500. 198, 101 part-time, negative 4,000. 182, 101 paramedic, 28, negative 17,000. 147, 101 paramedic, 24, negative 12,000. 178, 101 paramedic, 27, negative 19,000. 118, 101 advanced EMT, 1, negative 10,000. 116, 101 advanced EMT, 6, negative 3,000. 148, 101 paramedic, 25, negative 12,000. 196, 126 overtime, positive 78,500 for a total transfer of zero.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Jessica, second by Dan. Comments or questions? Hearing done, roll call.
Mr. Flanagan.
Yes.
Mr. Hughes.
Yes.
Mr. Cantz.
Yes.
Mr. Mocal.
Yes.
Mr. Webb. Mr. Bookout.
Yes.
Mr. Cantz.
Yes.
Mr. Whitehead.
Yes.
Mr. Piper.
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you, Maggie. All right, moving on. Whitney.
139 public defender, 172 perf, negative 14,500. 194, 174 life insurance, negative $160. 195, 175 disability insurance, negative 300. 171 FICA, positive 2,000. 193, 173 health insurance, positive 12,960 for a total transfer of zero.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Jessica, second by Dan. Comments or questions?
You said you somehow got your health insurance misfigured last year, correct?
Yes.
And you got that fixed for this year, you said?
Yes.
Any more comments or questions?
Is that, is that the same thing that happened with the perf?
You know, I don't know how there ended up being so much money in perf. It had to be a mistake on my part. Honestly, I may have got the two numbers slipped off for last year's budget.
Did we have people leave? That part, that?
We had one person leave, but it wouldn't have made that big of a difference.
Okay.
Further questions? Hearing done, roll call, please.
Mr. Flanagan.
Yes.
Mr. Hughes.
Yes.
Mr. Piper.
Yes.
Mr. Mocal.
Yes.
Mr. Bookout.
Yes.
Mr. Cantz.
Yes.
Go ahead.
Yes.
Thank you.
Moving on, Whitney.
124 communications, 109, 101 comtech, negative 15,000. 111, 101 comtech, negative 15,000. 134, 101 comtech, negative 15,000. 198, 101 part-time, negative 15,000. 196, 126 overtime, positive 35,000. 195, 119 holiday pay, positive 10,000. 536 equipment, positive 15,000 for a total transfer of zero.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Jessica, second by Dan. Questions or comments?
So Fred, what's, what's up?
It's what I do every year. I come at, come back and ask for money to be put into overtime and holiday pay to get us through the rest of the year.
So the overtime hasn't been spent yet, is that what you're saying?
Say that again.
The overtime has not been spent yet.
No, it's, it's to get through the end of the year.
And why all the negative comtech?
Those are open positions that we had throughout the year where we have extra money.
Equipment?
That is to add a redundant connectivity to the radio system that the commissioners have agreed to pay for half of, so.
Are you replacing it?
No, it's to add, it's to add a redundant connectivity system.
Thank you.
Further questions for Fred? Hearing done, roll call, please.
Mr. Hughes.
Yes.
Flanagan.
Yes.
Piper.
Yes.
Mr. Mocal.
Yes.
Mr. Bookout.
Yes.
Mr. Cantz.
Yes.
Mr. Whitehead.
Yes. Thank you, Fred. Whitney.
129 sheriff, 105, 101 deputy, negative 8,602. 115, 101 deputy, negative 1,570. 120, 101 deputy, negative 7,155. 126, 101 deputy, negative 5,317. 129, 101 deputy, negative 4,526. 130, 101 deputy, negative 2,018. 141, 101 deputy, negative 18,696. 197, this should say 126, not 101, sorry. Overtime, positive 27,884. 199, 119 holiday pay, positive 20,000 for a total transfer of zero.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Jessica, second by Dan. Comments or questions for Nancy? Hearing done, roll call, please.
I'm sorry.
Go ahead, Jim.
Overtime, is that something that we're budgeting for the rest of the year or is this money that's already been spent?
No, it's to get us through the end of the year.
And why, so what's, explain all the deputy?
We had multiple deputies this year that have been injured, so then?
We had multiple deputies this year that have been injured, so then they would go on disability, which means they're leaving money on their regular pay line, which is where some of this came from. One deputy was in the military, so he was not drawing salary for six months, which is a chunk of this also. That's why there was excess.
Are the deputies alright?
We still have Greek, unlikely, I believe, of this. So, they're back to work, they just can't go out, they've not been released to go work the road yet.
Sorry to hear that, I didn't know that.
Further questions?
I, one comment, I total out of all these transfers, we're going to, uh, put another hundred and ninety-two thousand dollars into overtime. That's on top of what was already budgeted. That indicates it to be that we don't have enough employees to do the work, and yet what we're facing in the future are fewer employees. So this, this is a problem that's going to continue to, to trouble us going forward.
I think, um, I certainly understand and respect your comment, as hopefully you will mine. Uh, it, I had a discussion with another department head a while back, and to me, it... Maybe it's not logical thinking, but to me, it seems to me like the more people you have on staff, the more people are either going to get hurt, the more people are gonna call in sick, the more people are gonna be on vacation, and the more people you hire, the more overtime you're going to have.
I'm not sure I agree, but interesting thought.
Further questions or comments towards Nancy's transfer request here? Hearing none, roll call please.
Mr. Flanagan.
Yes.
Mr. Mokel.
Yes.
Mr. Hughes.
Yes.
Spiper.
Yes.
Bookout.
Yes.
Mr. Kance.
Yes.
Mr. Wyatt.
Yes.
Moving on, Whitney?
One-forty-five, jail, one-oh-five, one-oh-one, sergeant, negative one thousand two hundred and thirty-eight. One-twenty-five, one-oh-one, correctional officer, negative one thousand five hundred and seventy-seven. One-twenty-six, one-oh-one, correctional officer, negative two thousand two hundred and fifty-two. One-thirty-four, one-oh-one, correctional officer, negative five thousand and forty-six. One-ninety-seven, this should say one-twenty-six, overtime. Positive ten thousand one hundred and thirteen for a total transfer of zero.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Jessica, second by Dan. Comments or questions? Hearing none, roll call please.
I, I, I do.
Alright.
Okay. So, Nancy, just, I guess to Jim's point, um, your overtime's, at the end of September, was about seventy-two percent in the jail and about similar in, in the, um, for, yeah. So that's right on par with where you'd be for the last quarter, but you still anticipate more.
Well, I would rather have it there, we don't need it, no matter what, it comes back to your general fund accounts, we don't spend it. But if we would start having a bad winter where there's a lot of accidents, or we have more officers get injured and then we're shorthanded, or we're at the hospital watching federal inmates, which takes two people for every inmate. All that does is force people in, work them over, which again is more overtime. So if it's not there, then I'm panicking and how am I gonna fill and pay these people?
Okay. Thank you.
Further questions or comments? Hearing none, roll call please.
Mr. Flanagan.
Yes.
Mr. Hughes.
Yes.
Piper.
Yes.
Mr. Mokel.
Yes.
Mr. Bookout.
Yes.
Kance.
Yes.
Go ahead.
Yes.
Thank you, alright. Moving on, Whitney?
Eleven-seventy, lit jail, one-oh-four, one-oh-one, correctional officer, negative one thousand five hundred and twenty-three. One-oh-six, one-oh-one, correctional officer, negative two thousand nine hundred and fifty-six. One-oh-eight, one-oh-one, correctional officer, negative six thousand and forty-eight. One-oh-seven, this should say one-twenty-six, overtime, positive ten thousand five hundred and twenty-seven for a total transfer of zero.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Jessica, second by Dan. Any questions or comments? Alright, hearing none, roll call please.
Mr. Flanagan.
Yes.
Mr. Hughes.
Yes.
Piper.
Yes.
Smokel.
Yes.
Bookout.
Yes.
Mr. Kance.
Yes.
Wyatt.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Nancy. Alright, moving on, Whitney?
Eleven-thirty-five, one-ninety, Cune Bridge in, engineer, one-oh-five, one-oh-one, project director, administrator, negative thirty-five thousand one hundred and fifty-seven and seventy-three cents. One-oh-seven, one-oh-one, engineer, positive thirty-five thousand one hundred and fifty-seven and, uh, seventy-three cents for a total transfer of zero.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Jessica, second by Dan. Carrie, you wanna explain this to us, please?
Yes. Cary Di, County Highway. So, in February, January, February, we lost our project director, um, and the commissioners did hire an engineer. So this is to move the funds that were left in the project director's salary to continue to pay out our engineer. I will let you know that Tanya from the auditor's office, um, did do the paperwork, get everything filed to get the forty thousand dollar reimbursement from the state. Um, we did receive that money last week, so we received it for twenty-five and then we'll receive it for twenty-six moving forward.
Thank you very much. Any questions for Cary? Hearing none, roll call please.
Mr. Flanagan.
Yes.
Mr. Hughes.
Yes.
Piper.
Yes.
Smokel.
Yes.
Bookout.
Yes.
Mr. Kance.
Yes.
Wyatt.
Yes.
Alright, moving on, Whitney?
Eleven-seventy-six, two-oh-two, uh, motor vehicle highway, one-thirty-five, one-oh-one, truck driver, negative thirty thousand. One-twenty-six, overtime, positive thirty thousand for a total transfer of zero.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Jessica, second by Dan. Questions, comments? Hearing none, roll call.
Mr. Flanagan.
Yes.
Mr. Hughes.
Yes.
Piper.
Yes.
Smokel.
Yes.
Mr. Bookout.
Yes.
Mr. Kance.
Yes.
Wyatt.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Cary. Alright, moving on, Whitney?
Forty-nine eleven, Delco, Farron Expo, two-twenty operating supplies, positive two thousand five hundred. Three-ninety other services and charges, negative two thousand five hundred for a total transfer of zero.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Jessica, second by Dan. Comments or questions?
What were the, uh, services that we were talking about?
It's to buy, um, at the, we have to buy winter diesel and gasoline, which we had to have filled, and the rest is just operating supplies to build the buildings with things that we need.
How'd the fare turn out?
It was good. It was real good.
Numbers compared to last year?
Pretty close. Um, on Mondays, we no longer have the carnival, the rides part, so Monday was a free day. So we lost some money there, but, uh, we still got paid by the carnival based on last year's Monday night. Uh, that was part of the agreement to finish out this contract, so it was pretty comparable.
Any further questions or comments? Hearing none, roll call please.
Mr. Flanagan.
Yes.
Mr. Hughes.
Yes.
Piper.
Yes.
Smokel.
Yes.
Bookout.
Yes.
Mr. Kance.
Yes.
Wyatt.
Yes.
Alright, moving on, Whitney?
Ninety-three twenty, DCCC doc grant, one-oh-two, one-oh-one, home detention supervisor, negative one thousand three hundred and ninety-one. One-oh-four, one-oh-one, case manager, two, negative three thousand five hundred and forty-three dollars and eighteen cents. One-ten, one-oh-one, jail division coordinator, negative two dollars. One-eleven, one-oh-one, jail division case manager, negative seven thousand nine hundred and thirteen dollars and forty-eight cents. One-twelve, one-oh-one, surveillance supervisor, negative nineteen thousand nine hundred and eleven dollars and sixty-eight cents. One-seventy-two, perf, positive thirty-two thousand seven hundred and sixty-one dollars and thirty-four cents for a total transfer of zero.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Jessica, second by Dan. Comments or questions for Jane?
Tell us where the, um, credits are coming from, especially the nineteen thousand.
Uh, good morning, Jane Miranda, Community Corrections. This is our Department of Corrections grant, and these are positions that, um, two positions that were vacant for a period of time, uh, that were not, so that money is being transferred to perf. The surveillance supervisor, the reason why that is so large is we are in the process of kind of restructuring that department, and the person that is filling that position at the time is paid out of a different fund.
Why is the perf, I mean, I don't understand why perf is so high. What, what happened there?
Perf is for our entire office, so we pay our own perf, um, and we have twenty-two employees throughout the year.
If I may, to help try and clarify, so perf's gonna get paid out of this grant and not get paid out of project income money?
Correct.
Because they need to spend the money out of the grant in order to utilize it all the way down to zero, the grant, otherwise they have to give the money back. So this is a way of being able to spend all the money for the grant and not have to use it out of another fund. Does that make sense, Jim?
Yeah. And is it normal to have to move perf, though? Cause you're, you used it all already.
Yeah, so a lot of the times, towards the end of the year, they utilize perf in what little bit we get. We get complete salary, partial perf, partial health insurance. So after that gets spent, then towards the end of the year, we're paying it off our project income.
Okay.
Further questions or comments? Hearing none, roll call please.
Mr. Flanagan.
Yes.
Mr. Hughes.
Yes.
Piper.
Yes.
Smokel.
Yes.
Bookout.
Yes.
Mr. Kance.
Yes.
Wyatt.
Yes.
Thank you. Alright, moving on, Whitney?
Eleven-twenty-two, project income, two-eleven office supplies, negative four thousand. Two-twenty-one, operating supplies, fuel, positive four thousand for a total transfer of zero.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Jessica, second by Dan. Comments or questions regarding this transfer?
This is your user fee fund?
Yes, this is our cash fund.
Thank you. Further comments or questions? Hearing none, roll call please.
Flanagan.
Yes.
Mr. Hughes.
Yes.
Piper.
Yes.
Smokel.
Yes.
Bookout.
Yes.
Kance.
Yes.
Wyatt.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jane. Alright, moving on to appropriations. Whitney?
One-fifty-three, commissioners, one-oh-six, one-oh-one, attorney, positive nine hundred and ten dollars and sixty cents. One-seventy-five, disability insurance, positive six thousand three hundred and twenty-two dollars and ninety cents. Three forty-two, workman's comp insurance, positive sixty-seven thousand seven hundred and ninety-two and forty-one cents. Three fifty-one, utility service, electric, positive two hundred thousand. Three fifty-four, utility service, sewage, positive sixty-five thousand. Three seventy-one, that should say, rental lease equipment. Positive twenty-four thousand for a total of three hundred and sixty-four thousand and twenty-five dollars and ninety-one cents.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Jessica, second by Dan. Questions or comments?
Wow.
Yep.
What happened?
Which one?
Um, so, let's start with, um, the workers' comp.
I think it was just budgeted incorrectly, and we've had more claims than in the past. Come next year, everyone will be paying for their own.
And these were, these are claims, extra claims, not premium increases, right?
Correct.
Um, so the electric, tell me about that.
Well, hang on, before you move on from workers' comp, Commissioner Brand, can you kind of talk about some of the work you've been doing on this topic for next year?
So specifically as it relates to workers' comp, are you talking about liability insurance?
Well, in terms of workers' comp, and is there anything that's being done to try to, um...
Manage the claims.
Manage the claims, yeah.
Yeah, so we are working on, so there's a way that we can go into, uh, the workers' comp system and manage the claims and show that we are being reactive, uh, putting in corrective actions to try to avoid accidents and injuries. Um, trying to formulate a safety committee, which I'm very appreciative of Mr. Ashley has volunteered to be on that committee, so that we can, uh, do analysis of injuries, uh, that happened on the, on the work site. And enter those irreversible corrective actions into the workers' comp system and try to avoid those accidents in the future. So, right now, we do zero reactive and zero proactive on workers' comp or accidents. So we just had an accident last week, uh, at the highway department, and we executed our first safety stand-down. So we took the facts of what happened, so we interview who knows what happened. When we do this, we're not on a search for the guilty, we're trying to find out who has the facts and knows exactly what happened, so that we can brainstorm as a team and try to figure out how that won't happen again. And we conducted our first safety stand-down at the highway department, so we'll, we'll continue to do that, uh, in areas where accidents happen.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Sorry, Jim.
Good information, appreciate that. Um, so, all of a sudden, we have this two-hundred thousand dollar elec, is it electric bill, or is it what happened there? Just all of a sudden, here it is? We didn't know that it was coming?
I don't see the utility bills. They all go straight to the auditor's office, so I don't see those. Um, I transferred money three times in each line, and as soon as I transfer it, it goes straight back in the negative. Because we get bills, and the auditor's office pays them.
So currently, we're at, the budget was four hundred and four thousand six hundred and eighty-eight for electric this year. Um, we've used a hundred and eleven percent of that, so we're, we're over to her, to her point. We have a thing to know how much we've, you remember, you remember how much we've transferred in this year?
I have transferred... What's this? I've already transferred fifty-six thousand.
Okay.
And that's just since I took over this position in May.
Yeah.
So...
Yeah.
When we were in finance on Thursday, we were comparing prior budgets to what we have now, um, and given what we had, before it wasn't, um, bucketed out by, it was just utilities general. So we have a better, better eyesight now on what type of utilities they're going towards, and looking at past and, and what we have going into next year, it looks like we've accounted for it better. So, moving forward, it should be better. Yes.
I don't remember. What, what did the budget look, look like for next year? Will, do we have it properly budgeted for next year?
That, that's what I was gonna talk about, so I wasn't able to attend finance committee meeting due to a conflict, so I apologize. So if this question was asked and answered in that finance committee, um, that's great, but did, do we know how much was, uh, allocated or transferred last year? So the way the budget was done prior is they took whatever was in the budget the previous year and added ten percent to it. But if your previous year budget number, starting points incorrect, just simply adding ten percent doesn't get you all the way to the goal line. So, do we know what was transferred last year or prior years? My guess is, this is pretty common. So it's just budgeted incorrectly. So to answer your question, Mr. Mokel, I do believe that we have properly budgeted for next year.
So...
Budgeted the same amount for next year that we budgeted for this year.
I, I agree with you, Mr. Hughes, and recall that we are working on, uh, cost reductions for our utility bills, specifically electric. So in this building, as an example, there is, um, a bank of capacitors in the basement, uh, that are utilized for power factor correction. And the assumption when this building was constructed, um, was a poor one, and the, the assumption was that the building would run three, three shifts, would basically run twenty-four hours a day. But we all know this building does not run twenty-four hours a day. It basically runs from about eight-thirty AM to four-thirty PM. Therefore, all that extra capacitance that exists in the basement was causing us to pay a higher utility rate. So we very simply went downstairs and shut off the capacitance, and it looks to me like we're saving somewhere between seven thousand and twelve thousand dollars a month in total electricity. So that, plus other activities that we're working on to save utility costs, uh, we have a, uh, I don't want to use the word grant, cause that gets people excited, but we have a free, uh, offering from American Electric Power. Uh, they've hired a company called ClearResult. I honestly don't believe ClearResult's gonna make it all the way to the goal line, but they'll find somebody else. ClearResult or a company like ClearResult is gonna come in and do an energy assessment for free. This isn't the, uh, what was done before at the Justice Center next door that, that we're still paying on. Um, and we'll take that energy assessment and react accordingly. Um, and we'll take that energy assessment and react accordingly with grants that will pay for those changes. So I do believe we've budgeted properly, even though to your your very accurate point out that we have the same number in. But we're working on cost reduction activities so we can meet that goal.
Couple of points. So in twenty twenty-four, you had a majority of the electric bill, it was the budget was seven eighty-seven five hundred. That's in twenty twenty-four. For twenty twenty-five breakout. The breakout started, so the original budget in the commissioners was three forty-eight.
Sorry. All right, so let me start over. So in twenty twenty-four, the budget for electric was in all in the commissioners' budget primarily. Seven eighty-seven five hundred, seven hundred and eighty-seven thousand five hundred. In twenty twenty-five, we started at three forty-eight, six eighty-eight. We are now up to the, or even prior to this, we were up to four oh four, six eighty-eight. So to her point, about fifty-some thousand dollars. So now we're gonna put another two hundred on top of that, so that's gonna be six hundred and four K. In electric, even though we allegedly carved out electric for, am I saying that right? Did that we did that for this year, this year's twenty twenty-five budget?
It should be separate.
It should be separate, right? So. Again, I'm I'm obviously concerned, you know, we've got a forty-three thousand dollar budget in highway for electric. We've got a twenty-four thousand dollar.
Is this just electric though, Commissioner? Or is this the two hundred thousand or is it all?
The two hundred thousand is just for the electric.
Nine-one-one's got twenty-eight K.
Is it just for this building or is it all building? All building?
Yeah.
Okay. And you referenced the issue was here, was saving money here. Is there is there also issues in the other buildings too?
Yeah, what I mentioned earlier with AEP and ClearResult, we're gonna start here because this is the biggest user. And go to the Justice Center and work our way down the line. Whatever's gonna drive the most money to the bottom line the fastest.
No, I mean, I it was just, I'm just pointing out the facts, I guess. Um, just in terms of of spend like, you know. Month to day, we're about sixty grand a month. Last month, we were about sixty grand. Um, I have to go back and try to trend the rest of the year, but. I mean, it's probably put, I mean, it's gotta be pushing that pretty much, so. I mean, this isn't an accusation. This is just, you know, hey, we we've ignored this for a long time.
That was my point about what was allocated in the past. I believe it's probably happened every year.
Further questions regarding appropriation?
What was it? What's the run lease, the twenty-four thousand?
For our um copiers, there was some miscommunication about the contract.
The copiers. So when, yeah. So there was a a mistake in communicating the start date for the new provider. And and not allowing the termination uh timeline to be executed. So there was a an overlap, Mr. Hughes, between the two companies.
I think when the, this is the second very large additional appropriation that last couple of months. From the commissioners and and. When we get it just the day of the meeting, to me, that's that is what causes the questions. And it would be, I think, more helpful to have more discussion or more documentation ahead of time. Uh, so we can can understand where these big numbers come from. That's in my opinion.
Bill, as far as finance committee goes, I'll try to work harder on getting the notes sent out. Hope it'll help uh answer some of these questions. I did, in finance committee, make a comment uh to the commissioners that the twenty-four thousand, in my opinion, should come from their budgets. Because it's the issue of them not having the contract read thoroughly and making sure they're in date. And start date of the new one didn't overlap.
Did you talk about the nine hundred and ten dollars and sixty cents for the attorney?
Yes, I did. Would you like to explain that one?
The PI form, which is done incorrectly. He's been overpaid slowly but surely throughout the course of the year. He's paying that money back. Just to get him through the rest of the year.
So you will see this a few times in our appropriations. We're up to appropriate a little bit more money to an employee. But they have all come to the auditor's office, I believe, and agreed to pay the money back. But this gets their line funded through the end of the year. And it's all because of an improper PI form.
That PI form process needs completely revamped.
And I would second that with.
So um can I point something out relative to the attorney? We have a line item of about thirty-two K or something for an attorney salary. In addition to a contract for the firm to also be paid separately, right, for the work they've done? Um, that makes this person an employee of the county, basically?
That's correct.
But we have a separate contract for their law firm.
For their purchase services, that's correct.
That seems duplicative. Like ours pays out of contractual services. I would assume if anybody else had to hire a lawyer, they would have to come out of contractual services also. I'm confused. I have been confused per year, just, and this isn't a question for you because I know it was before you, but. Um, you know, we have an attorney on staff, basically. But we're we pay out of two line items, so it's, and he makes benefits, so there's a cost associated with that too.
Is that the only attorney that's an employee?
I believe so.
I don't, most of our other attorneys, I don't think are employees.
No.
Ben is not an employee.
Correct.
Maybe Mr. Hughes, uh, Mr. Murphy on the drainage board might also be treated the same way Mr. Brook is.
So the county attorney is an county employee, but then also bills for additional services over about that.
That's correct.
I don't understand the part about it was somehow overpaid.
The PI form was incorrect and.
The salary portion specifically is.
Right. And that's being deducted now, that overpayment amount. Okay.
That's correct.
There's no other attorney line item in the expense report showing for any other departments, at least that we track? Are you aware of any?
It's the amount of the overpayment to the attorney.
What was the amount?
Was the amount, how much was?
Nine hundred and ten dollars or something like that, if I recall properly. I don't have the number in front of me. And the other attorney that I mentioned with the drainage board was also overpaid.
Both attorneys were overpaid.
Yes, sir.
Due to incorrect PI forms, okay.
That's correct.
Is the disability also a um PI issue?
No, Marissa told me that um it wasn't accounted for when phrases were done last year.
Further questions regarding this appropriation?
Just, just from my knowledge, is it common that we would have um this duplication? I wanna, I guess, maybe dive a little deeper into that for a second, that we have uh an employee. Supposedly employee of the of the uh county. Being a county attorney and then also paying the firm that he's with, that is that common?
Well, I don't know the answer to that, but um. If you're gonna pay a county attorney to be an employee, thirty-one thousand isn't enough. And if we are paying a county employee or county attorney to be hired as a an attorney for the county explicitly. You would think that you would just, we would adjust that salary accordingly and and pay him as an employee. We're not, we're paying him as an employee plus whatever contractual services comes out of the commissioner budget or where else he pays.
Surely not a full-time employee.
No.
Any benefits?
Correct.
What's that?
Great question.
How do we follow through on that question?
Well, I think probably one of the other commissioners would have to be here to answer that because they were the ones that probably initiated that agreement in the first place, I would assume.
I I don't know when it originated, but it it, there are two attorneys for boards that are considered employees and they get benefits. I think I was done, I guess, uh when there was a different party in charge.
Would you and the other commissioners have a discussion on this topic, of course, please? Kind of keep the finance committee at least up to date on your conversations.
What, say that again about the boards?
So the attorneys for boards, it's been tradition, at least in the last decade. For them to be paid as an employee and receive benefits, so. One is the drainage board.
Okay.
One, I believe, is health department.
So on the on the attorney's invoice, does he detail how much she was, how how, what the part of the invoice is his employment responsibility? And what part is his, is his billable hours over above his employment?
I don't believe I've ever seen employment detailed on a bill. Only activity that they're performing as.
They could, that they consider over above their employee work.
Correct. That's all that we see on the attorney's invoices, you know. For example, if they do work for an ordinance or something like that, we see that detail.
If conflict of interest?
I don't know that answer. That would have to come from somebody with more than a Cowan High School education.
Make a comment real quick, you're looking at the drainage board budget, there are no uh benefits coming out of that one. So I might disagree with you on how that attorney is treated. Uh, it sounds like there's a question from council to the commissioners. If you could work on getting an answer on your attorney.
He gets his benefits, the benefit, what you're talking about gets their benefits through a different department. Public defender pays Brandon Murphy's benefits.
For being on the drainage board? No, for being a public defender.
Insurance and disability and all of those things, yeah.
But he is a public defender also.
Yes.
So how it was crafted?
And go back uh to another budget and see if there's benefits there.
Sure.
But to follow up on what the council's asking from the commissioners is to, I guess, give us an explanation on your attorney. And the reason that it's a contract and an employee, it sounds like. If you would, please.
So you wanna know when it happened, why it happened, and if it's a conflict of interest? Are those the three, are those the three questions you want answered?
I guess I'd go back and wanna inquire why we have someone who's not a full-time employee getting benefits.
We have two hundred and sixty-four people that don't work full-time hours getting benefits in the county. You got two hundred and sixty-some people in thirty-two and a half hours. They're working eighty percent of the hours and they get a hundred percent of the benefits. They're gonna get all fifteen holidays next year. They get all their comp time, they get full perf. That that's existed for a long time. And there are reasons for that. I'm not being critical of it. I'm just saying, you got a lot of people not working full-time that get full benefits.
Like the commissioners and the council are consider, aren't considered full-time, but are eligible for benefits.
Elected officials.
Elected officials, yeah.
Sure. Still think that's different.
Yeah.
Further questions or comments regarding the appropriation?
Yeah, I did ask Elizabeth about this three sixty-four total, putting us at risk in twenty twenty-six. And I believe she said we we accounted for additional appropriations for the year. This almost maxes that out, correct? Okay, thank you.
Further comments or questions regarding this appropriation from the commissioners? Hearing done, roll call please.
It's Flanagan.
Yes.
It's Hughes.
No.
It's Piper.
Yes.
Mokel.
Yes.
Spock out.
No.
It's Chance.
Yes.
It's Wyatt.
Yes. All righty, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, moving on.
One forty-one, GIS, one oh one, one oh one, chief information officer. One thousand nine hundred and eighty-nine dollars and forty cents for a total of one thousand nine hundred and eighty-nine dollars and forty cents.
Move to approve.
Second?
Motion by Jessica, second by Dan. Questions for?
Uh, the note I have.
I'm Josh, I'm here for Kyle. Thank you, Josh.
This was a paid at twenty-six pay rate instead of the twenty-seven payer, or twenty-seven pays. Correct. And he indicates he'll be repaying this back.
Correct.
So this was a PI form issue also.
Further questions or comments? Hearing done, roll call please.
Flanagan.
Yes.
It's Hughes.
Yes.
It's Piper.
Yes.
It's Mokel.
Yes.
It's Spock out.
Yes.
It's Chance.
Yes.
It's Wyatt.
Yes. All right, moving on, Whitney?
One thirty-one, county extension, one oh five, one oh one, first deputy. Four hundred and twenty-four dollars and sixty cents for a total of four hundred and twenty-four dollars and sixty cents. Move to approve.
Second?
Motion by Jessica, second by Dan.
More of the same, right?
Same situation, yes. It's been corrected and the wages are being garnished to correct it. Further comments or questions?
Yeah, well, not not for him specifically, but just on this issue. It was unclear to me that our VIP system doesn't have the capability of automatically adjusting pays. So every year, every five years, whatever the number is, where twenty-six becomes twenty-seven, the VIP system has to be manually updated. Every employee, right, for this. Seems archaic in terms of its ability to uh manage payroll. Am I wrong?
You are not wrong, in my opinion, and I think this would be a good topic for us to discuss under new business.
All right.
Brought up.
Thank you.
Further questions or comments regarding this appropriation? Hearing done, roll call please.
It's Flanagan.
Yes.
It's Hughes.
Yes.
It's Piper.
Yes.
It's Mokel.
Yes.
Spock out.
Yes.
It's Chance.
Yes.
Wyatt.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, moving on, Whitney?
Seventy-two oh two inheritance tax going to eleven eighty-six, rainy day. Six thousand two hundred and fifty-eight and ninety-four for a total of six thousand two hundred and fifty-eight ninety-four.
Move to approve.
Second?
Motion by Jessica, second by Dan. Any comments or questions regarding this one? All righty, roll call please.
It's Flanagan.
Yes.
It's Hughes.
Yes.
Piper.
Yes.
Mokel.
Yes.
Spock out.
Yes.
It's Chance.
Yes.
It's Wyatt.
Yes. All right, moving on, Whitney?
Forty-nine eleven, Delco Fair and Expo. Three fifty-one utility services, electric, ten thousand. Three fifty-three utility services, water, two thousand. Three fifty-four utility services, sewage, four thousand five hundred. Five thirty-six equipment, ten thousand for a total of twenty-six thousand five hundred.
Move to approve.
Second?
Motion by Jessica, second by Dan. Comments or questions for Donna?
Your electric service. Just don't know, just.
We're we're just short, I mean, I'm hoping that I've overasked the ten thousand. And regardless, the money will go back to the fair fund, but looking at the bills, looks like we're gonna be close. We are going through some of our um. Lights and stuff that we think can be turned off for the winter to try to save money. Uh, we found all of our meters last week. Cause we weren't sure where all the meters were. This has been an ongoing thing, but we have found all those meters now. And there are some places we believe uh the electric can be turned off for the winter to help save money.
We also had a lively discussion about fees being charged at the fair. At the fairgrounds, I should say. Winter storage, things of that nature that uh I think we are losing out on additional revenue to help cover some of the increasing costs. And Donna says that they're taking a look at that with the board, correct?
Yes, they're I, they're meeting and hopefully gonna get it to the commissioners uh sometime next month. Cause commissioners have to approve any rate increase. We're very low compared, we've been comparing other counties this past week and we're so low. I mean, people will even come in for winter storage and tell us we're the cheapest place around. That's why they come. We don't wanna over raise them and lose those people. So it's not gonna be like huge increases all at once, but.
We need to keep up with the rate of inflation at a minimum.
Yes, the fair market value, I would agree with that.
It's not just winter storage, which, I mean, that's a big chunk, but like we rent out Hartland Hall all the time, wedding receptions and everything. We are just so cheap compared to other places. We are just so cheap compared to other places. And we're really not even comparable to most other places. We're so cheap.
Further comments or questions for Donna regarding this appropriation?
Just, just real quick on the utility bills.
Uh huh.
Is this, is this what you're forecasting? You're going to need to finish the rest of the year, or is this what we're already short?
No, this is what I'm forecasting that I'm, I'm going to need. Sewage just hit us in the face like the rest of the people. Um, our bill went from like four hundred and something one month to eight hundred. That's how big of an increase it impacted us with. And we didn't know it. I didn't know why until I talked to Kita and that's why the commissioners and other people are asking for sewage is because of that. Um, it's, this should get us through the rest of the year. I'm hoping the sewage will get us through the rest of the year.
Alright, further questions or comments? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Mr. Flanagan?
Yes.
Mr. Hughes?
Yes.
Mr. Piper?
Yes.
Mr. Smogel?
Yes.
Mr. Spuckow?
Yes.
Mr. Cantz?
Yes.
Mr. Wyatt?
Yes. Thank you, Donna.
One more question if I could. I, I forgot to ask, what is the equipment, machinery equipment?
Um, we're installing new doors with breaker bars in Hartland Hall. Some of them are almost falling off. But it's something that's needed to be done for a long time. Um, also, we're buying tools that, some of our tools disappear a lot. Uh, with our new, uh, grants person, these new tools will be locked up. So they shouldn't disappear. He's had to take things home to work on them and repair them. He went to get a shovel and a rake one day. There was none to be found, so he had to go buy a shovel and a rake for what he was going to do. So we're trying to get our tools built back up and hopefully they'll stay.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Alright, moving on. Whitney?
Eighty-one oh nine, Chirp, one oh one, Chirp Grant. A hundred and twenty-four thousand two hundred for a total of a hundred and twenty-four thousand two hundred.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Jessica, second by Dan. Captain Johnson was here last month and discussed this appropriation. Are there any comments or questions for Nancy?
Nancy, could you just describe this real quick for the record?
Uh, this is one of the outside patrols that they do. I can't honestly tell you what Chirp stands for offhand.
That's okay.
Highway, and that's as far as I can remember. Um, it's a reimbursable grant.
From the state?
From the state for, uh, Operation Pullover was one of the names it used to be. Um, so it's for drunk driving patrols, um, and just different facilities like that. School bus patrol.
Understood. Thank you. Just wanted to.
Further comments or questions? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Mr. Flanagan?
Yes.
Mr. Hughes?
Yes.
Mr. Piper?
Yes.
Mr. Smogel?
Yes.
Mr. Spuckow?
Yes.
Mr. Cantz?
Yes.
Mr. Wyatt?
Yes. Captain Nancy?
Thank you.
Moving on. Whitney?
Twelve hundred, Public Defender Supplemental Fund, one seventy-three Health Insurance. Thirty-seven thousand four hundred and ninety-four hundred and fifty-nine. For a total of thirty-seven thousand four hundred and fifty-nine.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Jessica, second by Dan. Just a quick explanation here, please.
A quick explanation is that we, again, where I'm transferring, uh, in County General for, I'm sorry, Shelley Harvey. Public Defender's Office, we are taking the rest of what we need to get through insurance, um, from our supplemental fund. Uh, heads up, I'm going to be requesting more out of the supplemental fund next year to finish up. In, or next month, I'm sorry, to finish up insurance shortfall.
So, I'm sorry, so you, you're pulling it out of there basically? Is that what you mean?
It, yes, I'm taking that out of our supplemental fund for my shortfall. For health insurance. I'm sorry.
In general. You're taking it for the shortfalls you have in County General?
Yes, yes, and the, for the rest of the year, um, our insurance will be taken out of our, the supplemental account for the insurance. And I've, I've spoken to the auditor's office about that.
Further comments or questions for Shelley? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Mr. Flanagan?
Yes.
Mr. Hughes?
Yes.
Mr. Piper?
Yes.
Mr. Smogel?
Yes.
Mr. Spuckow?
Yes.
Mr. Cantz?
Yes.
Mr. Wyatt?
Yes.
Thank you.
Alright, motion to approve financial transfers and to amend salary ordinance with like reductions.
Second.
Motion by Jessica, second by Dan. Roll call.
Mr. Flanagan?
Yes.
Mr. Hughes?
Yes.
Mr. Smogel?
Yes.
Mr. Spuckow?
Yes.
Mr. Piper?
Yes.
Mr. Cantz?
Yes.
Mr. Wyatt?
Yes. Council has the backfilling report in front of them.
Motion received the backfilling report.
Second.
Motion by Bill, second by Dan. Roll call.
Mr. Flanagan?
Yes.
Mr. Hughes?
Yes.
Mr. Smogel?
Yes.
Mr. Spuckow?
Yes.
Mr. Piper?
Yes.
Mr. Cantz?
Yes.
Mr. Wyatt?
Yes. Thank you. Moving on to ordinances and resolution. We have ordinance twenty twenty-five dash twenty-five for first reading.
I'll move to, uh, a first reading of salary ordinance twenty twenty-five dash twenty-five.
Second.
Motion by Jessica, second by Dan. We have two things that are asked for updating. We'll start with, uh, Commissioner Brand and Section Nine, Page Four. Give us a brief request.
Certainly. So Section Nine, uh, relates to part-time job classification levels. Not all of them because, uh, we're only talking about Section A. Not necessarily, uh, what would have been Section A through D before. Um, combined them all into one. Uh, we didn't touch, uh, Part E, F, or G. And what we discovered was we had some part-time folks that were being paid at rates that were not in the salary ordinance. Um, so they were maybe being paid, I'll make it up, they were being paid fifteen dollars an hour, but the salary ordinance that was there before only had a fourteen and sixteen dollar level. So, but they might not have necessarily had the qualifications like advanced training or certifications to move up to the next level. And nobody wanted to take away their pay. Uh, discovered this in a couple situations, both through attrition and just, uh, finding gaps in P I forms. So this modernizes the, the Section A through D. And just makes it one large range from twelve dollars to twenty dollars. And we took what you'll see in section, or in, uh, I, number two, three, and four. We took from the old B, C, and D and put those explanations in the, in a single section. So this gives the ability to have a range rather than specific pay ranges in the part-time level.
So there had previously been a period of twelve dollars an hour, fourteen dollars an hour, fifteen dollars an hour, twenty dollars an hour.
Right, and we had people at sixteen, we had people at eighteen. You know, how that happens, I have no idea, but that's what was surfaced during the audit.
Well, I'm, I'm for, uh, just simplifying this, uh, offering some flexibility, giving department heads and elected officials the ability to utilize part-time hours more effectively, because we think we're going to need to do that, um, potentially in the future, so. Fine with this description.
My comment would be that, uh, council approves the part-time amount budget and it is going to make us need to be more diligent on our transfers and what we approve in the budgets, but also like the idea of the department heads and elected officials being able to determine what they feel is necessary as part-time hourly rate.
I agree with that.
Further questions regarding Section Nine for Commissioner Brand? Alright, thank you.
Thank you.
The other part is Section Seven, Page Three.
So there was, we, we've, at least the Finance Committee has talked about, um, a little bit of a revamp back to, um, approving new higher vacant positions. So we just pa, we just, um, basically blanket approved the, um, backfill report for positions that are being replaced in the county based on solely that there's money available to do so. Um, I think we've talked ad nauseam at this point about next year and a couple of, uh, challenges we're going to be facing financially. Um, we have a couple of options in front of us. We've talked about the thirty-two and a half hour versus forty-hour work week that the commissioners are, are discussing. Um, I think that we have to be, uh, extremely diligent about attrition and bringing vacant positions to, um, the Finance Committee and to the council for approval once again. Um, not so much, no, no, no A B line item like we had to deal with before, but to bring before and discuss, um, the needs for replacement positions. Um, as Commissioner Brand has talked about multiple times, about what they've done with some of the commissioner departments. Um, altering new hires to be forty-hour work week hires. Um, I think we have to have meaningful discussion with department heads as things come up. So what this, this needs work still, so, um, I'm going to go over some of the things that I think need to be adjusted. And, and then maybe we table this or, or just wait for our second reading, you know, next, next time, but, um, in lieu of establishing just a straight-up hiring freeze, which is option probably B of, of what we've, we're going to look at here today. We're trying to make some adjustments so that we can, as a council, see what positions are going to be replaced and, and have discussions with department heads and elected officials about those. That's the goal of this language. So with that, um, on Section Seven, Number C. Um, it indicates prior to posting the vacancy, the Human Resource Director shall first notify the council finance committee and obtain permission to post the position. Um, Section D is also, um, added back in, I believe, upon receipt of permission of the council finance. The H R director shall post the vacancy and refer all applicants on file and all new applicants received to those department heads. So basically the process of, of, of that, um, posting of the job. Uh, we probably should change that Human Resource Director to whatever.
Human Resource Leader?
Yeah.
I think it's been there five different times.
The, the director, yeah, we'll, we'll get that adjusted. Um, then there's, I have a question in on Section E. It says, upon selection of an individual to fill the vacancy, the department head or office holder shall submit the request to the county auditor for approval by the council. If any additional appropriation related to the vacancy is requested, it must be submitted to the council along with the hiring request. To me, that's a duplicative request and a duplicative approval. Um, we basically want to review a vacant position assuming it, before it's actually posted. So this is actually after that's, that's happened. This is actually, we found somebody and now we got to go get approval again from the council. I'm not sure that that language is necessary. So that's something we, I want to, I think we should look at. Um, in Section F.
I, I don't know, just for.
Yeah, go ahead.
So understand that the Finance Committee is going to, at this particular point in time, make the recommendation on hiring uh, for a position or not. Is that kind of where we're at? And that the, uh, overall council has no position in that, uh, request?
What this language states doesn't mean that that's how it's going to go.
Okay.
Um.
And I, and I guess.
That, that, that.
Put that around real quick. The other thing that I'm thinking is that if somebody's in dire need of, of a position to be filled, uh, can they wait until we, as a council, decide whether we're going to allow that position to be filled or not? I don't, so I don't know.
That's the goal of this, I guess. It's to slow down the hiring process and to bring to, to fo, to bear the, the conversations we're going to need to have around, you know, positions, you know, in twenty twenty-six and twenty twenty-seven.
If it's an emergency, we can always have a special meeting. Not ideal, but it has been done before.
But to Jim's point, um, it only indicates the Finance Committee. It does not indicate the full council, so. But that's a, that's a discussion point, I think, um, because I do believe, because, uh, Section F then says upon the approval um, of the council. Once the person has, once we've approved that, yes, we're going to post a position. It has been posted. They have found somebody. That approval, um, has already been done, basically. So I think we, this is where the language has to be. We have to tweak this. Because right now it's not clear, number one, and number two, it's, um, I believe that it should come before the full council. Not just the Finance Committee.
Agreed.
But then in Section F, this is a, a, a little bit of a separate topic, but, um, once the council has approved and they've hired somebody, the department head or office holder shall complete the employee personal information form as amended from time to time and submit the completed form. It currently reads to the Human Resources Director and the County Auditor for Approval. Commissioner Brand has brought up that, about the P I process and his recommendation is that the form go directly to the auditor's office, which is where payroll is done, because the personal information form is simply a payroll form to go to the auditor's office and that we maybe add language that it goes to the auditor for approval, signature, and entering into the payroll system. Uh, so that's language that, that needs to be adjusted.
I think it requires a discussion of between the auditor's office and H R.
Okay. Okay, so well, I mean, that's, that's something we can take up as our, as we're finalizing this. Let's come up with something there. Um, because the next sentence, a copy of the P I form is attached. I don't think that's necessary here. I think we could strike that whole, next two sentences. Um, and then in submitting the form, the department head or office holder affirms that he or she has complied with the provisions of Section Seven. Uh, in G, upon approval and completion of the P I form, uh, upon approval and completions by the council, I don't think we are going to have any role in the P I form, so I don't think it's necessary. If it reads anything, it probably should just read the auditor if that's where we end up. Um, and then, you know, they can, they can hire. Uh, it, Section Eight is, or H is unchanged. So it needs a little bit of work, but ultimately that's the theory behind the change and open it up for discussion.
I think that one of the, the first things I noticed upon reading this, it's a Jim's point too, was about it going to the Finance Committee. I, and, uh, we talked about it during Finance Committee briefly, that I do believe it should be a full council, um, decision. The other thing I want to bring up, just for everyone's reference, uh, and, and Bill probably remembers because he was council, our council attorney at the time. But in twenty twenty, uh, we did actually have a hiring freeze ordinance that we utilized, so that we wouldn't need any of, of this. Uh, and that ordinance was twenty twenty dash zero one five. I don't know if you had a chance to, to pull that or not, Eugene, um.
You got a copyright here.
But during that, so during that time that we had that hiring freeze in place, uh, on our transfer agenda, the little, the magic motion or whatever that we read every, uh, month after our transfer and agenda, excuse me, transfer and appropriation agenda, just added the language. Actually, the full motion read, to approve financial transfers and to amend salary ordinance with like reductions and to amend hiring free, hiring freeze ordinance twenty twenty dash zero one five. So that did allow us to make those emergency hires during that phrase mostly for public safety and building maintenance, uh, is what we were able to do there. I think on occasion, I think we had one for Rick for in the election office or something. We did have to make some, uh, adjustments there. But that's, that's how we handled that situation, uh, most recently.
Further comments?
Well, but I don't think we're to the hiring freeze stage quite yet. Um, but the way I look at this, whether it's the council or the Finance Committee, either one, I don't know what the criteria is for approving or not approving a new, a replacement. Um, it's, so it seems to me we're, we're kind of ahead of ourselves. We, we have a budget for twenty twenty-six and it has X number of positions.
It's, so it seems to me we're, we're kind of ahead of ourselves. We, we have a budget for twenty twenty-six and it has X number of positions funded. So if, if one of those people leaves in January or February, I would expect the Department Head or elected official to replace that person. I don't think there'd be any special permission needed. Going into twenty twenty-seven, we need to, as we know, have a better handle on what our finances are going to be, what our revenue is going to be. And then I think we need a plan to say the Clerk's Office needs to have two fewer employees or whatever the case may be. So we have some criteria, so that Department Heads and elected officials can anticipate what, what they're going to need to do in order to meet budgetary requirements. And maybe that'll be taking thirty-two and a half hour people up to forty to, to fill in. We have to have some plan. This to me is sort of operating on an ad hoc basis. And I don't, I don't know how the, how the Finance Committee or how the Council would say, no, we're, we're not gonna let you fill that position. I don't know what the criteria would be until we have a better handle on what our revenue is going to be and, you know, what we can afford.
I would, I would throw a couple cents in here if I could. I'm not in disagreement with your comments. However, I think looking forward to, not looking forward, maybe a better word, to twenty twenty-seven's budget. To me, if we can, if we can ease into this, if you will, and I don't know that any of us have the, this isn't all written in stone. I don't know that any of us really know what, quite what to anticipate. But I think if we, if we start the process, that we'll be more accustomed a year down the road as to a better direction as to what we may need to do. Precautionary, I guess, is that if we do nothing next year, then all of a sudden we might find ourselves in a position in the following year's budget to have to make drastic changes that I think, again, we're shoot, if we do a drastic change, we're exactly kind of what you talked about today, just now. And having to make a lot of rational or irrational decisions based on a quick timeline. This gives us, in my opinion, a little more time to try to go by trial and error, just to see what we feel like will work. And maybe what's not going to work with Department Heads and their people. And so I think, in my opinion, I, I like the idea of easing into this one person at a time versus saying we have to cut two people, you know, like yesterday and just see where it goes. I don't know that any of us really know at this particular point in time how it's going to work out, but I would, I'd be in favor of starting the process.
Rick, do you have a comment?
Yeah, Rick Spangler, Delaware County Clerk. My first thought being an elected official, and there, not all the elected officials are up here and we're just hearing about this today. I do think, whether you go forward with this or not, I'd like to have a meeting of the elected officials with the Council. So we could talk about the language in this and how we would handle it. You know, you guys, I don't mean this in a bad way, but there's not one of you up there that can tell me what my judgment clerk does. So how are you gonna tell me whether or not I need to replace her immediately or not? And, you know, I got twenty-two employees, each of them have a job and most of them back up another job. So, you know, not, not to be totally against this thing, but what I would like to do, if we're gonna, if you're gonna go forward, and I know, you know, you've got some issues in here that even you guys don't agree with. Let's sit down with all the parties, you know, let's talk with all the players, the elected officials, the Department Heads and the Council, and try to find a way to go forward rather than, than coming in with this and, and, you know, I'm, I'm not big on trial and error, Jim. I'm, I'm sorry. We need to wait till we got exact numbers. Once we know what the state's gonna do, then we'll know how to react to, to what we got. Just, you know, we're, we're running around like a panther on fire on this Senate Bill One. And, you know, there's a short session coming up here in a, next year. And I think that's going to be revisited pretty heavily, because there's gonna be every, every municipality and every county is gonna be down there asking our legislator, you know, what the hell do you guys do?
Thanks, Rick. I agree with you. I think that that would, that meeting of the heads would be outstanding. I think it is what needs to happen for planning purposes. So appreciate that. I don't disagree that the criteria that Bill outlines doesn't exist, that, that is true. And without a hiring freeze, there really isn't. To, 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 to. But I will say, I'm sorry.
I'm, I'm sorry, I shouldn't have.
But what I will say is, we had only one significant department this year during budget, come to us with significant gains in cost efficiencies, work efficiencies, power efficiencies, et cetera. And had the Commissioners not done that work, we would, I mean, we wouldn't have reached the, the area, what we did with our budget for next year. And I have yet to have anybody else come to us with any ideas of how they're gonna gain efficiencies, you know, not rehire based on attrition, things of that nature. And those are the conversations that I think need to happen, to your point.
In, in our defense, we weren't told of the shortage. As a matter of fact, we were told, you know, to figure raises for our people and so we weren't prepared for that. Trust me, if you say in twenty twenty-seven, you come to the Clerk's Office and say, you know, what I'd rather have you say is, you gotta cut a hundred thousand dollars. Don't, don't tell me I gotta get rid of one or two or three. Say, let me run the depart, I was elected to be clerk of the county. So say, here's what you got, Spangler, get the job done.
I don't disagree with that either.
I didn't think you would. Thank you.
So, you know, getting more efficient in twenty twenty-six is the goal. So this, if this stimulates the conversation, great, if, you know, we're in agreement to, to do so. I think just having, bringing to the table, that was the goal initially, is to bring it to the table, to say, hey, we really, everybody needs to look, and, and whether we know the exact numbers or not, we're never, we're not gonna know. We're gonna, you know, hopefully the Commissioners will be approving some scope with the, with Pinker Tilly to work with the Strategic Financial Planning Committee that we put together to try to, you know, spitball basically, the, you know, plan for twenty twenty-six until we can get some finalized numbers from them. So we don't, we're, we're working, there's no doubt we're working from, you know, not a lot of information. But we do know that it's not gonna get any better than it is today. So that's, that's the, that's the overration goal. I actually, this morning, when we were meeting with Brad and Eugene and told Eugene that I, I had, you know, I'm actually, this was my initial idea. At the same time, I actually think the hiring freeze is actually more prudent and probably more of the criteria we should be utilizing to, to analyze the, you know, replacement positions. But to Bill's point, the budget is in place. It's there. I just think that we're gonna need to have a sit-down with everybody to have a, where are we gonna go from here? Plan with, with all of our Department Heads and elected officials. So if that's our next step, that's great.
Thank you, Matt. Dan, do you have a comment?
I think that we all agree this is gonna need some adjustments and work, so I'm not opposed to bringing it in and seeing how it works. So we have the problem kind of fine-tuned by the time that we actually we have to make those unfortunate decisions.
So if you're open to it, President, Mr. President, I will work on language with Ben initially so that we can stimulate this conversation and, and have a, a meeting in the mind. I think, when is your typical Department Head meeting? Second Monday of the month? Okay. And maybe we can do it, because Commissioner Brand hosts a, a Department Head meeting currently, but we also, we have to have something more readily.
I would hope that a few of us would be able to attend from Council at that meeting.
Yeah. The next one's on November tenth currently. So if we can try to maybe get something done by then, I will, I will try while I'm on vacation.
I mean, as soon as you get some language that you're comfortable with, send it to the rest of the Council so we can be reviewing it and have questions answered if needed prior to the tenth, because we want to make sure it's clear if we're going to at least have something to present to elected officials, Department Heads. Other comments or questions regarding the salary ordinance? We have a motion, a second for first reading. Roll call, please.
Mr. Spangler?
Yes.
Mr. Hughes?
Yes, for introduction.
Mr. Vogel?
Yes.
Mr. Buckout?
Yes.
Mr. Piper?
Yes.
Mr. Cantz?
Yes.
Mr. Swyatt?
Yes.
Mr. Brand? What time is that meeting?
Ten.
Are we gonna need to post that, Dan?
If only three of us or less attend, then it will not need to be posted. It's just a meeting that Commissioner has for Department Heads. So I just want to make sure that hopefully a, a close to final draft is ready by that time. So that way just important discussions can be had and conversations can be had there. Alrighty, moving on to appointments and committee reports. Council has in front of them list of Council appointments. I'm gonna read the ones that expire. I'm gonna read them all and then I'll go back and clarify some, but all of them would expire at the end of twenty-five. Alcohol Beverage Commission, Animal Care and Services Board, County Council Attorney, Council Finance Committee, Devil Economic Board, Delaware County Development Commission, Fairgrounds Board, Property Tax Board of Appeals, Tax Abatement Committee. The Information Technology Board and the E M A Advisory Council are filled by Council members. We appoint those annually. And my notes from the Auditor's Office, the Pita Boa Board is the only one that has to be a balanced board of what we reappoint.
Pardon me?
The Property Tax Board of Appeals. The County Council Finance Committee, of course, is going to be filled with Council members. And the rest of them, Council will appoint at their discretion, at their will. I will work with Marissa on the list of those that the Council will appoint that's not going to be filled by Council members to be posted online. And they'll reach out to the Auditor's Office for those that are interested in serving in those positions. Are there any comments regarding board appointments? Because we do have to mention it two meetings before we make those appointments, so we plan on making those in December.
Under the rules, we're supposed to establish a date persons to submit names.
I thought in there it said December first, but it, it doesn't. I sure would like December first.
December first, it's to be distributed to all Council members.
How about then November thirtieth?
November thirtieth is a Sunday.
What's that, Friday?
Twenty eighth.
Friday after Thanksgiving.
So now, now we're at Wednesday, the twenty-sixth before Thanksgiving is gonna be, alright.
That works.
So just, just to be clear, it's, it's your rule, excuse me, five point zero three, the Council shall see that the listing of open positions is publicized and establish a deadline for persons to submit their name, their own name or the names of others who may have an interest in serving. So the, the deadline is arbitrary, it's up to you. But the next rule does say that the list such as it is will be distributed to members of the Council later than December first.
I guess does that give the Auditor's Office enough time if we say Wednesday, the twenty-sixth, and then we have to have it sent out to us by the Monday or after that holiday?
The week of Thanksgiving or the week of December first?
December first is a Saturday.
Yeah, and then unfortunately, we don't receive that many inquiries on, you know.
Well, last year I noticed, uh, they still have.
Well, if I can get a consensus, we'll make it Wednesday, November twenty-sixth to the Auditor's Office for anybody that's interested in serving on boards. Alright. Any other appointments or committees not on the agenda that want to speak?
Yes. From an I T perspective, so a handful of departments and folks have been working with Google on a Google Workspace trial. I know Ed, they're desperately trying to get ahold of you and your department on your feedback. If anybody else who is participating can provide, Eric Clark from Google or Bruno, who's been hosting the Google weekly or bi-weekly touch bases on questions and things, that'd be great. We're gonna be having to look at a proposal from, from Google to, you know, before the end of this year, and I think the trial ends this week or something. So it's tough because it takes you out of your existing workflow into the Google workflow. But anybody who's participating in that, who can provide some guidance, I would greatly appreciate it. I know Kyle is out of the country currently, but he has been a big proponent of, of this process and indicates that he's, his feedback has been very positive, so. Think that's really it for my T right now.
Other committees? And have any old business on the agenda? New business? After working with Marissa, we put together a twenty twenty-six meeting schedule. Sent it out to Council. Hopefully Council's had time to review that. And are there any concerns, comments on those dates?
With no new elections, we don't have to have a organization meeting on the first, correct?
That's correct.
I'm not sure that is, I mean, I don't think it literally has to be the first, but you do have to organize.
Well, we can do it on the first meeting.
Oh, I'm, I'm sorry. Yeah, I mean, you have to organize every year and elect, okay.
Yes, but we just don't have to do it on the first since we don't have new members.
I agree. Sorry, that's understood.
No, that's, I may not have been clear.
I did, formally approve this.
I'll move to approve the twenty twenty-six meeting schedule.
Second?
Motion by Jessica, second by Dan. I guess now do we have any comments, concerns or questions regarding those dates?
I'm assuming that when you were working on it, I didn't get a chance to go look, that you accounted for when spring and fall breaks fall, okay.
Hearing no other questions or comments, concerns? Roll call, please.
Mr. Spangler?
Yes.
Mr. Hughes?
Yes.
Mr. Vogel?
Yes.
Mr. Buckout?
Yes.
Mr. Piper?
Yes.
Mr. Cantz?
Yes.
Mr. Swyatt?
Yes.
Marissa, if you would also post that online, that way we have that. Other new business, I would like to at least discuss the idea of, and I'd like to hear the Auditor's opinion on it, moving to twenty-four pay system versus the current twenty-six slash twenty-seven every eleven or twelve years, whatever it is, and what are the pros and cons?
Give you an answer off the fly.
I guess, I just, what is your thought, overall thought of it? And then if we need to dig into the details, we can later.
Obviously, the pro is you're gonna have two less payrolls to process. The con is for the employees, they're out to, they should not even much better because they'll get paid twice a month versus every other week.
And the benefits, the day come out twenty-four, twenty-six? So the. Okay.
So benefits come out twenty-four times per year.
Not because we get billed monthly.
Because we get billed monthly. So there are pays that are odd or two pays that are different. Yeah.
I guess in the Department Head meeting, that might be a topic that gets discussed and just check the temperature of the room and see. I guess in the department head meeting, that might be a topic that gets discussed and just, uh, check the temperature of the room and see what it, what might be. I, Ben has told me that the county executive sets the frequency of pays to either monthly, semi-monthly, bi-weekly or weekly based off Indiana code. That was all on the commissioners.
Okay, and it's also in the handbook, I believe, um, the, the number, the frequency of pays, so I don't even know why.
It's currently listed as bi-week.
It would be a disruption from our standpoint because right now they have a process down that we have a date every week of what needs to be done. And I were going to have to look at a certain day of dates. So that could possibly create an issue with departments trying to follow dates.
It just seems like PI forms have been an issue since I've been on council and I was trying to come up with a way to simplify it and thought this was an idea. I'm not saying it's a golden fix by any means, but I wanted to have the discussion.
So the comment or question was about the department head meeting. So the second Monday of every month, the commissioners have a staff meeting with all the department heads that fall under the commissioners. And we have discussed this a couple of times about going to twenty-four pays. I would make a note that ten months of the year, they only get two pays already. So about managing their money and things like that. So we've had those open discussions and it was a concern. The benefits, as, uh, Auditor Carol had said, is you process payroll two fewer times. So it's two fewer opportunities for error or, you know, things like that. And it opens up efficiencies in the department to do that. Um, in my experience, anybody that's executive or, um, exempt, uh, per the Fair Labor Standard Act, they typically get paid twice a month anyway. They would get paid on the fifteenth and the last day of the month because the last day of the month's not always the same depending on what month you're talking about in the calendar. If that last day, if the fifteenth or the last day of the month fall on a weekend, it defaults to the Friday before. So, you know, to me, it makes a lot of sense to go to twenty-four pays. It standardizes everything. Example, this year there are twenty-seven pays, but benefits are being taken out twenty-four times. You know, next year, we're gonna have twenty-six pays and the commissioners just approved the premium, uh, grid in the last meeting. And then after the meeting, I was told, I didn't know this before, that it's only taken out twenty-four times. So we're gonna have to amend that ordinance to go to a twenty-four deduction, which is going to increase the amount that's gonna come out of people's paycheck. Instead of going to the, because they're getting twenty-six pays next year. So if you divided the total premium by twenty-six, it's gonna be lower than twenty-four.
The prior pay grid said per pay also though, right?
Sorry?
The prior insurance pay grid also said per pay. So it wasn't, it's not really per pay. It's per, it's twenty-four times divided by whatever.
That's what I learned after the last commissioner meeting is, and, and I believe Auditor Carol just confirmed it with his initial comments that, we get billed once a month.
Nobody noticed.
Therefore, it comes out on, for twenty-four times. And I don't know if we can talk to, it, it's McGriff now, was Apex. We have a new player. Maybe we can talk to them about billing it on our terms, you know, something that works for us rather than letting our vendors tell us what to do. I, I prefer the former, to be honest with you. I like telling our vendors what to do. What works for us. And generally, to your, to your question, um, President Whitehead, the, the department heads have wrapped their head around twenty-four pays with the commissioners. They don't love it, but they've wrapped their head around it.
Seems on a simplification standpoint for the county itself, it would make logical sense. And avoid be five to ten, eleven, however many years that happens on the twenty-seven pay thing. So, okay.
Since the commissioners determine this, I would personally, speaking with the rest of the council, would highly encourage commissioners to evaluate that. And I'd recommend going to twenty-four pays.
Okay.
Other comments regarding this topic? Alright, hearing the elected officials and department heads.
While I'm here, a couple of cost savings ideas that we're working on right now, we're working, a big one, uh, and I started with what's gonna drive the most money bottom line the fastest. That's why we worked on what we worked on last year. Now liability insurance is in our crosshairs. That's a big one for us. I do believe that there's a significant opportunity. Uh, our current liability carrier is on a commission basis and that is, uh, foreign to me. Most, my experience in the past was they would be on a fee basis and that would be a significant, uh, reduction. Also analyze the, uh, rate that we pay per hundred dollars. And as an example, we are paying in the county eleven cents per hundred. And the average, uh, for employers in our area that we compete with for people, uh, is about six point seven cents. So I think there are a couple of things that I've asked, um, USI to take a look at. I've also made them aware that we are looking at their fees and I'm working with a couple of other companies to give us estimates on our liability insurance. That was one of the big ones that Mr. Hughes made a comment about earlier, that we came and asked for a big increase. It was on the liability insurance. If you recall, uh, our annual premiums are like one point three million dollars, but we had only budgeted eight hundred and eighty thousand. So that was a big appropriation that had to come before. I believe we can get back down into that range where we were budgeted previously. You know, I, I believe that we could save four or five hundred thousand dollars on our liability if we go for it. Uh, another one that we're working on is our phone system. My belief is we don't need any desk phones. Any modern organization works off of communications through Teams or Zoom or, or something like that. But we pay for all the phones that are on our contract today. So we had asked our, our provider to give us a list of usage. And they gave us a list back of the almost five hundred phones that exist in the county. And almost fifty of them never, nobody ever hears a dial tone, but we're paying for those fifty phones. If you look deeper in the, uh, report, there are almost a hundred and thirty phones that have less than ten minutes a month worth of usage. So we can probably start off right off the bat, just eliminate a hundred and thirty phones and stop paying for them. Uh, but if we can get all the way to what I believe the goal should be, which would be to eliminate desk phones, uh, we could probably save seventy to a hundred thousand dollars a year. So that's something else we're working on. And then, um, finally is our paper products supplier. They also supply all of our filters for our HVAC, uh, taking a look at that. Saw a couple of invoices for filters, um, maybe twenty-five times what I was used to paying for our filters, for our big filters for our HVAC. And then started looking into what we're paying for paper products. And this is a little bit of a continuation on the copier thing. I do believe we're overpaying for our paper products. So those are the three things that actively working on.
Thanks for reminding me about the phones. I, that's what I, the other item I was trying to remember about the IT thing, but, to Commissioner Brand's point, um, there was the fifty have zero and there's, if there's less than ten calls a month, that's the hundred and thirty number in this spreadsheet. We're meeting with them tomorrow, I believe.
That's right.
Uh, to have this discussion and then I was gonna send this out to probably everybody, uh, or at least the elected official department heads. And, um, show them the list and have you guys go through them in detail and carve out any others that we think that can be consolidated at a minimum. So the goal, I think, our, our goal is probably around two hundred for this wave and see, because we're gonna quote this out to other vendors. And we need a number to give them. I've already gotten at least one other option for us, but, um, so anyway, that's the heads up on that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Other elected officials and department heads.
Good morning, council. Tony Skinner, Delaware County Sheriff. The first reading, the, the thing that you guys went through a little bit ago, um, and I'd only speak for myself, but I probably speak for some other department heads and elected officials. Historically, with the hiring, public safety has always been excluded. I hope that you continue that tradition. I, I know that for myself, if we have an opening in the jail, which we frequently do, the jails probably has the most turnover of any county, um, entity. And, and we just can't sustain having gaps in that. Uh, I know that dispatch and EMS are probably the same way. So I, I, I hope that you continue that tradition of, um, excluding public safety for that freeze or anything you're considering for the future. The second thing is, uh, the twenty-four pays. I've, I've, under my breath, wondered for years why we didn't do that already, so I fully support that. And then lastly, um, I'm, I'm gonna have to check with our pension plan. But I'd like to at some point in the future, hopefully by January, move to, um, having our payments made to our pension plan instead of being quarterly, move those to monthly. Sometimes they're, they're late, sometimes they're on time. I, I think if moving those to monthly, um, probably would be easier for the auditor's office, although I don't know. I don't know how they operate on, on automatic payments. But I, I think it would be, uh, more consistent and, and for us, I think that would be a benefit. So it's something I'm gonna check on our end, see if it's in the plan, if it has to be approved, if so, who has to approve it or whatever. But I'm kind of floating that idea out there now. Not asking you to even discuss it. I'm just throwing it out there right now that at some point I'd like to bring that to you if it's something that you have to approve. So those are my three things. Thank you.
Sheriff, if you would, council, the commissary report, quarterly report that were required to be given was presented to us. And I want to thank you and Nancy for getting that to us.
Thank Nancy.
Thank you, Nancy. But I just wanted to make record of that, that we received it.
Yep, okay. Thank you.
Other elected officials and department heads.
Gavin Green, Delaware County Coroner, uh, wanted to come and give the update on our numbers, uh, from the coroner's office for the number of calls that we have. As of this morning, we've had five hundred and seventy-eight, uh, calls generated for the coroner's office. And that is from homicides, natural deaths, uh, unexplained that we have to go out and investigate. And so that tracks to be around six hundred and ninety-four, uh, cases for, uh, projected for twenty-twenty-five. That actually increase, surprisingly enough, is not, um, from my office, been from any additional overdoses or any homicides. But there has been a lot of referred cases from other counties hospitals or our hospital when it comes to injuries. When it comes to elderly people or anyone else that would fall and break some sort of limb, hip, leg, femur, anything like that, that we get referred those cases and we have to review them no matter what. So it might not be one that we go out on, but I know right now, I want to say I have about twenty cases that I'm having to look at medical records just because of injuries that were naturally sustained that normally would be referred by a doctor that would sign it, but because there's an injury, um, that we have to review it.
Who submits the referral?
The doctors do. So IU Baltimore Hospital contracts with a company that reviews all their death certificates. And they'll get all the information and then they'll look over those medical records. The hospital would say this is a natural death. And then the doctor goes to look at all the records and say, no, this wasn't.
The liability company probably.
No, it's the doctor.
I mean, not the, who, who signs off on the death certificate? Probably the, the physician, right?
Yes.
From IU.
Correct.
They pass it to somebody else who does risk management or liability review or whatever. Then it comes to you?
No, that, so either a doctor can sign it or I will sign the death certificates. And so the, the doctor will say, am I gonna put my name on this saying this is the cause and manner that which someone died?
Right.
If they don't sign it, they say, nope, there was an injury, then it gets kicked over to me and then I have to review it.
At our expense.
Yes.
So if someone falls and breaks their hip and it gives them enough trauma that they unfortunately pass.
Correct.
That's a case that the doctor may say, I want you to look at it and now it's our expense to look at it.
Correct, and that might be several days after the fact that someone breaks their leg last Saturday and they had surgery, they've been in the hospital and they just don't recover and then they pass away. We weren't initially called at the initial injury, but once they pass, there's a SOP that IU Health reviews, that says why a coroner should or should not be, um, contacted. Well, if they fell in the nursing home and they haven't passed away, we would not be, we wouldn't be called. But as soon as they pass away and then we find out. So then we basically a week behind the, the ball of trying to investigate to find out what happens.
How much time per case does that take? I mean, just the ballpark, like, takes you a couple hours to review something like that? Takes you two days?
Well, when I came to, when I came to council last month and I talked about there's a delay, it's weeks, if not months. Because we're trying to get medical records, trying to interview people. I would say probably ninety percent of those cases, um, myself or Rhiannon will do, so it wouldn't be on our part-time people. But it's hundreds of hours.
Is this the same across the state?
Yes.
It's relatively new, like my, my grandma fell in twenty-ten and broke her hip and had hip replacement surgery and then passed. And I don't remember the coroner being involved then.
So.
So maybe the doctor just chose to go ahead and sign off?
Correct, so it is, and when I took, when I took office, I had discussions with the local health department because there would be a time where they say if any broken bones within the last year, it has to be signed by the coroner. And I kind of gave some pushback and said, no, that's not the case. Because if they fell and they broke their finger, but they had cancer and then the doctor puts, well, yeah, the contributing factor of broken finger, that's not what killed that person. Um, and so I pushed back and I got with the state health department and they said, if it's not a the leading cause of death or a contributing factor that if that wouldn't have happened, then no, the coroner does not have to sign. So if your grandmother, if your example were broken her hip, but other contributing factors or she died from something else, it was just a bad circumstance, she also had a broken hip, then the coroner would not be involved. So, and that's where we pushed, we have pushed back, um, council person, council with the hospital. And when it gets referred to us, we have a little button that can reject the case and say, no, we're not gonna sign off on this. It, that did not kill them. But if it does get it, then that kind of starts the time. And we've had, um, Rhiannon just had a conversation with the local health department. Our numbers are the highest they've been in our queue waiting to be signed in three years. Because the number of, number of medical records that we have to pull, we have to request, we have to subpoena and look through. And the problem is, one medical, you don't just say, give me the medical records for this event. I have to subpoena records, all of your records, uh, map for all of time and all have a thousand pages. So then you have to then dissect it and look at events, look at dates.
What's the health department's role?
They are the registrars of the actual death certificate. So, I mean, the efficiency is, I could go on, but I, the, the death certificate gets sent to me, I sign it. Once I sign it, then it goes to health department and they register it with the state. And then they get, that's where either the funeral home or the families will go and get a death certificate. The coroner's office just signs them. We don't actually produce them.
It's a huge burden too to the families who are waiting.
Correct.
There are a lot of finances, anyone who's had to deal with, uh, loss of a loved one, there's a lot of things that you can't get done until you have that death certificate. So that's, that's a burden on their family too.
Yeah, I mean, I don't know what the answer is obviously, but you know, it just, it's a, it's a burden to the county taxpayer as well.
Yes. I mean, so. And again, it's, I don't, I don't normally stress out about things, but it's something that does keep me up at night. And I know that it also affects Rhiannon and talking about.
Because of the backlog.
Yeah, because of the backlog. And to talk, um, in reference to Commissioner Brand about the telephones, I would love to see the data on our telephone because our phone is ringing non-stop with families in funeral homes, um, calling, finding out where it is. Because funeral homes typically can't get paid until they get their death certificates so they can file for their insurance to pay everything off. I mean, I've had funeral homes that have started giving out, uh, my personal cell phone, which it's okay, uh, to family members finding out where their death certificate is. So, and, and it's, I would, I would love to clear it up. Normally I like to have eight to ten and I think I have forty-four in my queue right now. So it's, it's a huge, huge problem. With all hospitals that have been kicking over and then also just turning around and, and having injuries that you get notified after the fact that you can't just say, oh, it's because of a broken hip. Then you have to really look at that medical history. Then you have to really look at that medical history and say, oh, well, they had COPD, they had cancer, they had all this stuff and, yeah.
Well, since you brought it up, Rhiannon had, I'm on a, you know, 126, 126 calls, 95 calls over three-month periods. So, she is high, but the rest of your phones don't get used at all.
No, they don't, no, they don't. Well, and as soon as they were talking about that, I would love to go to a, a phoneless system and, and have our phones incorporated with...
Go in the field.
Well, and have our phones incorporated into Teams and have the telephone number through Teams and, I mean, have the headsets. Because it's, if I'm not at my desk, either out in the field or somewhere else to, to actually pick up a phone and talk, like I, I need to see somebody or I, we're always working on our computers. So, it's just be on our telephone, it's archaic almost.
I would state that if, you know, there's any, I don't know, I mean, what do other counties have to deal with? And how do they, I mean, do they get reimbursed for anything? Do they, like, I mean, what do we, just here, take it, you know, like?
It, it's almost the, I don't wanna say it's the cost of business, but it's just, that's how everybody's getting inundated with these. I can tell you that the company that IU Health is contracted with to sign all these death certificates, there's three doctors that are spread over the United States.
Yeah, and that's the burden, because they could give two...
Well...
Whatever about that. And so, that's why they're just burdening us with it.
Well, but I can tell you, they, they do care because every time it comes to them, they are still charging IU Health for that. And then they are still turning around and sending to us, so they say, hey, look...
But it's no skin off their back to send it to us because they're just reducing their own liability. So, that's what they're trying to do, right?
Well, but then we can turn around and kinda say, this is on the, on the hospital and then it's more public pressure.
Yeah, we should have a discussion with them about this company. And if, if you see a trend that's raised and it's getting significantly higher over time, then there should be a discussion.
Oh, we, yeah, that, that company, it's Death Certificates, Inc., surprisingly enough, that, yeah. There was a big, there was a committee on naming that, and so...
Well, I mean, we're not gonna solve that today, I just, it is, it's unfortunate.
Yeah.
Thank you, Gavin.
No problem.
Thank you for the update.
No problem, and no one signed up for public comment, just let you know.
I appreciate that. Any other elected officials and department heads? Seeing none, there's nobody that signed up for public comment. Is there anybody here that wants to speak for the public? No, all right, comments from council? Mr. Hughes?
About a week ago, David Pinnicuff wrote an article in the Star Press regarding the impact of the property tax relief bill, Senate Bill One. I'm very appreciative that they would take the time to publish that and, and encourage public discussion. But one thing that struck me, toward the end of the article, the Legislative Services Agency, it says, "Show Delaware County will receive increases in actual property tax revenue each year." And then it says, "LSA projects a 5.1% increase in property tax revenue in 2026 compared to 2025." And if anybody followed our budget discussions, that probably came as quite a shock, where's our 5.1%? I had, last month, brought up this little chart. I used a 4% increase because that's what DLGF said we would get from 2026 over 2025. How they got to 5.1%, I think, I'm guessing because Legislative Services Agency doesn't talk to citizens, that they used our advertised amount for 2026, which DLGF tells us always to make higher than what we anticipate. And we used 29,750,000. So, that's the max levy amount that the, the LSA is passing on to the public as being what we're going to get. But they don't talk about the tax cap loss again, which increased by 17% this year. So, I had said that we would actually receive a little bit less than the year before in 2026. If you use the advertised amount, it would be a little bit more, but it's not 5.1%, it's less than 1%. So, I'm, I'm, I'm disturbed because this is a state agency that's responsible for providing information to the public and they're providing bad information. They're misleading the public, I think they're misleading the legislature and I think that's part of the problem that we're having to deal with is try to educate our legislators that the problems created by Senate Bill One are real and they're drastic and we're having to deal with them.
That also doesn't take into account any taxes we don't collect, because we don't know that number until late, right?
Phil, do you think the extra 1% is related to funding going into county YTD districts?
I, that certainly has an impact, there's no question about it.
Yeah.
Other comments from council?
Well, the one thing we talked about in finance pertaining to that too, it's like some people are talking gross and other people are talking net. And when you're, when you're not talking the same language, that can make things really confusing too.
The TIF districts, I don't believe, they're not, they're not capped by the 4% tax levy increase, so it's a 100% capture, so...
Other comments from council? All right, I have a comment. Our next meeting, we're gonna have a public hearing and it'll start at 9:00 AM. Okay. It'll be November 18th, 9:00 AM. And the subject is the approval of building lease for the Addiction Recovery and Rehabilitation Center. And then following that public hearing, we'll have a regularly scheduled council meeting.
The public hearing starts at 9:00, is it?
Starts at 9:00. Tuesday, November 18th. Beyond that, I know Harvest is winding down for a lot of people, but our farm is still very busy at it. And daylight savings change comes up here shortly. I do appreciate those people who are kind and courteous and patient, but there are those that are not. Please do your best to be safe, we want you to be safe, we wanna be safe, we all wanna go home and see our families at night. Beyond that, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'm moved.
Second.
Motion by Jessica, second by Dan, roll call please.
It's Plankin.
Yes.
That's Hughes.
Yes.
Smoakel.
Yes.
Spookout.
Yes.
Piper.
Yes.
Cance.
Yes.
Swyad.
Yes. I need adjourned.